Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Rowe, Festerson. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Brinker Harding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take a seat. I'm having a moment today, Ron. Last night at sundown, the Jewish holiday of Sukkot began. Sukkot commemorates the 40 years Israelites wandered in the desert, and it also celebrates the autumn harvest. It's considered a joyful and festive holiday. Today, however, marks a dark date in history for our Israeli friends and families. Two years ago on this date, Hamas brutally attacked innocent Israelis, killing, wounding, and kidnapping thousands, including Americans. Today, we remember the victims, stand with the families still waiting for their loved ones, and demand that every hostage is brought home. I also want to address the serious events of yesterday here in Omaha. Early Monday morning, Officer Steve Mersick and Officer Crystal Bartlett responded to a disturbance call at 120th and Dodge Street. What started out as an encounter to de-escalate rapidly changed when the individual quickly pulled a gun, shot, and struck Officer Mersick in the head. Thankfully, Officer Bartlett was uninjured. And thank God Officer Mersick is alive, and from all indications, appeared that his injuries are not life-threatening. But this situation is a sobering reminder of the dangers the men and women of our police department face on every shift. Our officers put their lives on the line to protect and serve every day. Whether it's a late-night traffic stop or encountering a person in distress, we see how quickly things can change. It is incumbent upon us as elected officials to support the men and women of the Omaha Police Department and not demonize those that put their own lives on the line to protect ours. I pray that Officer Mersick has a quick and full recovery, and for his officer partner, Bartlett, and all of our police and first responders who keep us safe and respond regardless of the dangers that they may encounter. Thank you. Thank you. Couple things to mention here today. We have our UCLI group here. They are from nine Southeast Asian countries, and there are 23 here total that became honorary citizens today. And I know Councilmember Rowe had a nice chat with all of you, and we welcome you here, and thank you for being here today. Thank you. On another note, my, we have a special guest also. My grandson Fitzgerald Daniel Deathless is here with Dad Chris and Mom Megan and Aunt Maddie. So can we give my grandson a nice round of applause? Thank you. And it's, it's also National Physician Assistance Week. My daughter Megan's a PA, so thank you for the PAs out there. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall of Legislative Chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. A reminder that you will have three minutes to speak on an agenda item. Please stay on topic. If you would like your comments entered into the public record, you can email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofomaha.org. Councilmembers receive these emails, and we read them. Finally, councilmembers may ask members of the audience back up for clarifying questions, but not for extra time to speak. I would like to remind councilmembers to speak directly into their microphones so audience members in attendance and at home can hear. And also, people, when you come up to the microphone in front here as well, please make sure the microphones are in front of you so people can hear. Thank you.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for BBQ chicken located at 1028 South 74th Plaza.
The public hearing is now open on item number six. Is that one on Zoom? It looks like we, okay. Is anybody in the audience to speak is a proponent or the applicant for item number six? Okay.
Two weeks.
Move to layover until October 21st.
Motion is second to layover. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Rowe, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, to consider an addition application to the Class A liquor license for Holland Performing Arts Center located at 1200 Douglas Street to add a new building with an outdoor area.
Public hearing is now open on items seven through nine. Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Oh, I'm sorry. Item number seven.
Item seven.
Sorry, thanks.
Hi. Colin Kozel. Do I give my address, too?
Please.
Okay. 8216 City Center Drive, Apartment 505, La Vista, Nebraska. So the applicant in this case is Omaha Performing Arts. I am their attorney, Colin Kozel, Frasier Stryker. In essence, Omaha Performing Arts already has a liquor license. Can I show the visual? So this is the current Holland Performing Arts Center. Just Dodge Street, here, 13th Street, and then Douglas Street. Liquor license is already covering Holland Performing Arts Center. Omaha Performing Arts is constructing the Tanaska Center for Arts Engagement here, and there will be a skylway that connects the two on the second floor. Omaha Performing Arts is really only asking that the liquor license be extended from Holland, from the Holland Building to the Tanaska Center, and then also that it will cover this outdoor green space here approximately. And there will be a fence around this area. So with that, I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here on item number seven? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson E. Queston Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I have nothing against--
Donnie, can we get your address as well?
Yes, sir. 4928 North 52nd Street. I have nothing against the Holland Center. I'm hoping they bring some of that Johannesburg South African wine. It's very good. But in the meantime, I was down in Lincoln, and I have an application here for-- excuse me, anyone that wants it, for those vacancy liquor commission. So here's an application, because I think one of you folks should be applying for that liquor commission job down there. That's where we're kind of moving in that direction. And khenisha wa, soa di, niha, namaste, and unyaseo. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here today? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to say congratulations to the Holland Center. A number of us were at your 20th anniversary last weekend. It was really well done. It was a great concert as well, and we appreciate your 20 years of operation in the city of Omaha. The facility looks great and still sounds as great as day one, so thanks for being here, and I look forward to supporting this today, too. Thanks.
Thank you. We had a motion to approve. Motion is second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Rowe, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Walnut Hill Replat 10 with a waiver to Section 5384A lot depth located at 1116 and 1120 North 40th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Open the public hearing on item number eight. The applicant here today, good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Scott Los with TD2 Engineering Survey in 10836 Old Mill Road, representing DNE LLC. Happy to answer any questions on this final plat item.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember, Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Yes, if I could have the applicant. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Could you tell us a little more about this project, please?
Five affordable housing units, two to three different styles, very small, on a piece of vacant ground. It's just an infill project with private drive access, public sewer, stormwater treatment at 41 something Hamilton. I'm going to forget the address exactly. North 40th Street, excuse me. E.J. Thompson is the developer. He's not here today, but hoping to do this and many other of these kind of projects in Omaha.
Thank you. And what is the timeline for this project? When do you look to break the ground and have these--
Well, we've still got city approvals to go through as part of the condition, the plat subdivision agreement, those items. I'd imagine we'd be breaking ground in the spring as we get through the public improvement, design approval process, so probably early spring.
Great. Thank you. No further questions. Motion to approve.
Thank you. We had a motion and a second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Rowe, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Items nine through 11 can be considered together for Military 180 Crossing located northeast of 180th Street and Military Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 11, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
I'll open the public hearing on items nine through 11. The applicant, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Lana Bayless with DLR Group, 6457 Francis Street, Suite 200. I'm here on behalf of Bennington Public Schools to answer any questions that any of the members of the council would have.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is there any proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I think, Mr. President, as you stated at the beginning of the meeting, we read all of our emails that everyone sends us. We got an email in regard to this project with a number of questions, and so I'm not sure, Lana, if you'll be able to answer, or if Public Works needs to chime in. So I'll ask the question and see if--
Go for it.
--who can answer. Will the, will you be paving 180th Street between Bennington Road and Military?
We are paving 180th between Bennington and Military. It'll be three lanes along the frontage of the high school site itself, and it'll be two lanes from the north property line of the high school up to Bennington Road.
Great. And then I think it says with turn lanes for congestion, that would be the three lanes to help with turning?
Yes, I actually have a site plan if you want to see.
Perfect.
Okay. See if I can turn it on. Is it with me here? Is it on? Okay. So it's hard to zoom in. 180th? Ah, okay. That's as far as it'll go, but that'll get you there. So 100, or Military is on the left of this, of the plan. 180th is on the top of the plan. North is to the right. We are doing public streets along the east property line, North 177th, and along the north side of the high school site. Chicory will be new two-lane public streets. We're working with the county on military road improvements and 180th improvements. Part of what will include a roundabout at Military and 177th, and then we have a second roundabout at the primary drive entrance into the high school site. And, yeah.
All right. Well, I think those were the questions that this person asked. I think he was concerned with crashes at 180th and Military, and I would say roundabouts, I've been told by Planning and Public Works, are the number one way to reduce crashes. So putting two roundabouts in, especially with a lot of high school students who will be driving, new drivers, that'll probably be a significant improvement even to the area and the homes that will be surrounding it.
Correct. And originally, we just had the one roundabout at the drop-off drive, and in correspondence with the county and participation with the county, we're going to do the roundabout at Military as well.
That's great. Well, thank you. I think whoever sent this email, I won't read their name, but they, they'll probably be very pleased with the answers that you gave, so I hope they're watching. Otherwise, I will send them an email back with the answers. I appreciate it.
No problem.
And with that, I will move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. No further lights. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Melton, Rowe, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you both, or thank you all.
Thank you.
Items 12 and 13 can be considered together for property located at 2205 North 88th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone this property from R2 District and GI District to GI District. Item 13, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from low-density residential industrial and open space to industrial and open space.
I'll open the public hearing on items 12 and 13. The applicant here today, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Drews. I'm with Thompson, Dreeson, and Dorner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there any proponents here on items 12 and 13? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a short question for you. This is in my district, just north of about 88th and Maple. It's a current industrial area, and I think all this does is consolidate that zoning to industrial. There's no new development proposal there, is there?
Correct. No, and actually, they had to remove some pavement. That's the only work that's going to be done. They had to remove some pavement and plant some trees along the edge of the parking lot for the, to create a buffer yard to the property to the north. But otherwise, the lot was split residential and industrial, and they're just combining the lot to be residential.
Great. Thank you. With that, a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. No further lights. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Rowe, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve the Grover ALMC Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3425 South 70th Street in an amount up to $3,300,113.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 14. Mr. Seaton, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Don Seaton, City Planning. This project is near 72nd and Grover. It's on a parcel that has been part of the former Coco Keys property. A new assisted living memory care facility will be constructed. Three stories, 100 units for senior living, assisted living, memory care. Developers Grover ALMC LLC, managed by Brett West. It's a $30 million project. They're requesting $3,300,113 in TIF support. It's an appropriate land use for the area. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Is there any proponents here on item 14?
Hello, Brett West, 5505 North 290th Circle and Valley. I'm the developer on the project and happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Thank you. Is there any, any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I, Brett, a couple of questions for you. Good afternoon. What's the timeline on this?
Well, we're moving dirt probably next month, and then we'll start kind of in earnest in the spring. So, yeah, it's going right now.
Okay, well, that's, since I've been on the council since '21, all the great development going on in that area, it's good to see--
Yeah.
--for some senior, senior care and memory living units--
Yeah.
--desperately needed, so--
And the parallel right next door, we're a partner in that, and that'll wrap up at the end of the year. So, well done, community. Well done.
Thank you. Yeah, you can, good place to eat out there. Did I close? Okay. I did close, right? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Rowe, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Okay, sorry. The public hearing on agenda items 15 and 16 were held on September 30th, 2025. Any council discussion? Got a motion, second. Row call.
Goodwin. Nope, we're in roll call.
We're in roll call, Larry.
Nope.
We're taking roll call. Roll call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Rowe, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items 17 through 30 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. I will open the public hearing. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Magdalena Garcia, and I'm the director of El Museo Latino. It's item number 24, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Can we get your address as well?
2615 Calvin Street in Bellevue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other proponents here on items 17 through 30?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson E. Queston Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd. One is this. Niha, khenisha wa, soa di, Thailand, unyaseo. Is it possible for me to pass this application for those liquor commissions to Mrs.--
Donnie, we got to stick with the items 17 through 30 here.
I support it.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Items 17 through 30. Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Rowe, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 31, an ordinance vacating a portion of Harney Street from Farnham Street to 42nd Street and vacating a portion of Harney Street from 42nd Street to 41st Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing on item number 31. Proponent, applicant, proponent?
Luke Weatherly, 2111 South 67th Street. Here on behalf of Nebraska Medicine. I also have Chad Cruz with Nebraska Medicine if there are any questions on this topic.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents? Item 31. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 32, an ordinance to transfer permanent easement and land to Omaha Public Power District located near 102nd and West Maple Street.
I will open the public hearing on item number 32. Is there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 33, an ordinance to approve the Grover ALMC Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment.
Public hearing is open on item 33. Mr. Seaton.
Yes, Don Seaton, City Planning. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson E. Queston Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. And President Bush said, "No child left behind." Osama Lakem, I support this program as well.
Thank you. Is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 34, an ordinance to approve and authorize a contract with Creighton University for paramedic and EMT training, continuing education, and technical support for a period of five years.
I will open the public hearing on item number 34. Proponents, good afternoon.
Hi, Chief Andy Bierbauer, Omaha Fire Department, 1516 Jackson Street, proponent for this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Bless you.
Item 35, an ordinance to approve an agreement with HSA Bank and Webster Servicing LLC for claims administrative services for the city health savings account, flexible spending account, and Cobra plans.
Public hearing is open on item number 35. Are there any proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 36, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Ameritas Life Insurance Corporation to provide administrative services for the city's self-insured dental plan.
Open the public hearing now on item number 36. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 37, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Minnesota Life Insurance Company to provide life insurance coverage to eligible employees of the city of Omaha.
Public hearing is now open on item number 37. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 38, an ordinance to approve a quote from Karasoff Technology Corporation for use of LinkedIn for employment recruitment.
The public hearing is now open on item number 38. Proponents, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Gabriel Ryland, City HR Department, here to answer any questions if you--
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 39, an ordinance to establish a Class A flammable combustible liquids storage district number A-171 located at 3441 South 66th Street.
Public hearing is now open on item number 39. Are there any proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 40, an ordinance to establish a Class B flammable combustible liquids storage district number B-229 located at 3415 South 205th Street.
Public hearing is now open on item number 40. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 41, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Omaha Tri-Park Complex Development and Management Agreement with MECA and the Downtown Riverfront Trust for reimbursement of additional project costs in an amount not to exceed $7,900,000.
Public hearing is now open on item number 41. Proponents, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Katie Bassett here on behalf of MECA, 455 North 10th Street. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have the applicant come forward. I think it's just always good for the public to have context on, you know, how we got to this agreement. I have the backstory, but maybe you can just give us a high level of it, please?
Yes, absolutely. Throughout the course of the Riverfront project, you know, working in existing conditions immediately adjacent to the flood wall, and as, you know, the plans developed, the need for pickleball courts, additional surface parking, resurfacing, some surface parking, and then extensive engineering and permit closeout has been needed, which is what this funding will go towards.
This, is this across the Riverfront then in various sections, or is there a specific area that it's focused on?
Mostly east, these items mostly go east of 8th Street, or are focused east of 8th Street, in that--